Heritage and Arts Commission Special Meeting for December 2nd will begin. Call the order.
I'll go ahead and call the roll. Chair Gupta.
Here.
Vice Chair Fiebush.
Here.
Commissioner Etamad. Commissioner Fong. Commissioner De Muhica.
Yeah.
Commissioner Farin. Commissioner Nogez. All right. Are there any oral communications before we get started? Seeing none.
Okay, I'll give a brief chair report. Vice Chair Fiebush and I met a couple of weeks ago. Or maybe it was not even that. It was like, it was like before the holidays. And we sat down and we covered quite a lot of ground. Including the calendar scheduling. Roles and responsibilities for commissioners vis a vis. Artists who are showing in the upstairs galleries. You can jump in. What else did we discuss?
I think mainly we just blocked out the calendar of upper gallery versus lower gallery timing. We identified two of the nonprofits from last year that would fit in well this year that would tie to. And I'll go into the staff report, the AAPI month. It might be mine. And Hispanic Heritage Month. So it was a good, good planning session.
And, and we're going to get into some of those details today because this is the last month. And of course, we have SF Art Week coming up and. We need to get going on filling the calendar. But I think we were there, so let's begin. Do you want to just start with the discussion items with the financial report?
So discussion item number one is the financial report. The commissioners requested this update at this meeting, so. I'll just go through it quickly. The town council allocated $15,000 in general fund. For discretionary use by the Heritage Arts Commission for fiscal year 25 to 26. Supports operational needs, including banners, reception supplies, refreshments, and additional operational requirements. As of November 2025, $7,198.15 is still unspent. The expense categories break down as follows. You spent $975.46 in reception supplies. That includes, we updated our wine supply. Artist Laureate. $751.01. That includes both the Artist Laureate Wall Project and some expenses related to like her laurel wreath and that kind of thing. Exhibition supplies, $580.87. Banners, $1,250.36. This includes both the exhibition banners and then the Landmark Society concert banners that you support. Events, this includes, this is, this is entirely the Native American Arts and Culture Event, $4,153. And public art is $84.15, and that just represents the lodging for Scott Froshauer when he came to visit. The other funds that you manage is the Public Art Fund, which is designated for public art exhibitions. This does require town council. Permission to use. And that includes a $50,000 grant from the town council from a couple of years ago. Current fund balance. Is $54,432.86 as of February. It's probably gained a little bit of interest since then, so. And that would be what you would, I believe you would use that fund for big public art projects. The Heritage Arts Project Fund, which is where all the artist commissions and donations go into. And that currently sits at $13,265.17 because we've had some pretty successful art exhibitions lately. And the, on the second page, you can see the commissions that broke down over the calendar year. Ginny Doyle, $700. Cecily Staran was almost 1,200. Yu Ying Zhang was $31. Kathy Gray was $891. Susan Katz just sent us a check for $213.75. We'll see how Deborah Maddox does, but. They've, we've had a successful year this year on that. So there's your financial report. Do you have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Fong.
We just wondering with the $13,000 that that includes its $3,000.
Microphone, Victoria.
This is new.
Kids table.
I just wonder if that 13,000 includes the 3,000.
It does. We started the year with about a 10,000, a little under 10,000.
And then I just wonder if you could itemize a little bit more on the expense categories. For instance, how many banners and what's the cost per, how many for landmark and how many for us so that we can. All of this helps us with the budget as Trish and Arjun and I worked on it for future.
Absolutely. So Dave Gotts orders his banners from Half Price Banners. They cost about $55 per banner. We order ours from Davis Sign Company because the difference is Dave takes the, has the banners shipped to his house and then he does the grommets and all the like hemming. In his house, and I don't have the resources nor interest in doing that, so, or ability. And so we pay $240 per banner from Davis Sign Company. And it's gone up a little bit because we now have them shipped to the office because I, we need to somehow get them from San Rafael here and, you know.
So how many each group that we've done?
Um, let me look that up.
I mean, I can save on shipping and pick it up. I'm, I'm out that way. I know where they are.
Fantastic. You're signed up. Thank you. It is.
He doesn't want to do it for us.
He's willing to do it for us, but I've, I've been designing them and I'm happy to ask him to order them and do it, but. I don't know. He does so much that I feel kind of guilty to.
It's a lot of banners too. How many banners is it every year?
Yeah, it's.
Well, it doesn't take long for somebody who knows how to do it, you know? It is not the time.
No, it isn't really. I think that's sort of exchange, you know, we're supporting the concerts with all the banners and he's willing to do it, but. You know, we're discussing, nope.
If you're willing to approach him with that request and, you know, yes, Nora.
I was gonna say, I feel uncomfortable approaching him with that request simply because it is labor intensive and we've got the money. We, we have a lot of money that we have spent, and on top of that, it isn't like we're all falling over each other to go help him with the concerts. So, you know, I, I don't think we should.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
You're right. It doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to know exactly how many for.
So they're for each, each artist exhibition, so we have six per year upstairs and then we've started doing banners for the downstairs galleries, so.
It's about three, four.
Yeah, so we're looking at 15, 16.
We did six this year.
Well, we're gonna.
Costs.
Yeah.
We got.
And how many do we do for landmarks at?
It should come out to seven. Because we have, I'm sorry. Six and four, 10. Because now we have six upstairs and we're on a three-month schedule downstairs. So there's four counting landmarks, I suppose.
Well, if we're just doing our exhibitions, including this landmarks exhibition, six and four, that's 10, so it's $2,400 next year.
Yeah. I mean, you know.
And then Dave, he does, I think. He sends me such, you know, bills sort of in clumps, so I would say maybe he did six or eight this year. I'm trying to think how many, he just got his dates for the banner placements. And I think I have maybe eight to 10 dates for him, but they're $55 each.
Okay, so for the 1250. Here. Basically is mostly going to. Dave's?
No, I think they're mostly going to.
How many? How many is based on the 1250?
They're mainly going to our banners, and I'm sorry, I should have itemized that and I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me.
We can, we can get there.
Yeah, we'll get there. I'm just planning ahead for the budget as we have to justify.
Right, and so maybe before the January meeting, the budget ad hoc can get together and I can give you all that. I can give you all the detail information and then you guys can figure out what you want to do next year at the January meeting. We'll put.
And you have a, some inventory of what we have in the supply so that we could anticipate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's.
I have a question.
Yes.
Isn't that we have some money left for this year?
We have $7,000 of discretionary funds left that will run out June 30th, so you have six more months.
Run out June, not, not January?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it runs on the fiscal year, so it goes from July 1st to June 30th.
Pretty good. We're 15 and we're a half seven, so.
So this, I will, because this is just a discussion item, I'm just going to put this on the, in my notes to create an agenda item and then I'll reach out to the budget ad hoc. To set up a meeting next year. Which is next month, which is crazy.
Right, sounds good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion item number two, unless there are any other questions about the financial report, I'll move on.
Oh, and any public comment before we move on? Yes.
When we originally set the budget, I believe we put some money in there for potential grant writing or interns also. I think we were. That's been on our wish list is getting a student intern. I know we have so much fun setting up and doing all of the cleanup. But I also know that there's a lot of super talented kids that love art. And might want to volunteer with an intern and even get a paid internship. I think we put that in the budget. I'd have to double check. But I'd just like to see us saving space for bringing more of our young community members in to share the fun with us.
Well, maybe, maybe we can fold that into a discussion with Ms. O'Leary and with Krista as well.
Yeah, good idea.
Okay. I'll make a note.
Not to say they would want to make these grommets and put these things together, but just in general. You know, plus there's an expediency. Sometimes you have to order them and get them quickly and that sort of thing.
But we're, we're planning ahead pretty well with this next, you know, with our action item number two. We should have a pretty good idea of how things and maybe the maker space. Maybe Yvonne has students in the maker space that are interested in that kind of thing and can do that. So it's worth working out with him and, yeah, so at the library next door. So if there's nothing else, no public comment, we can move on to discussion item number two. San Francisco Art Week, discuss event schedule, local business tie-ins, and are there activations during that week, volunteer schedule? So there is a new staff report that I just put together today. We just, we talked a little bit about the background of this where Krista has reached out to SF Art Week to do a collaboration. So we're now on the map of San Francisco Art Week galleries. And she set up some events, January 18th from 3 to 5, Marin Art Day. A community-focused participatory event connected to the waterline theme of the show, how the bay connects us. Tour of the show, mapping of community and waterlines around the bay will align with the process-oriented spirit of SF Art Week. Be an invitation for people to contribute words, reflections, small pieces that would become a part of a larger collage in the show. I think she's still sort of fleshing this out. January 20th from 6 to 8 p.m. will be her opening reception and the kickoff celebration of her term as Artist Laureate. And that'll be, you know, planned really nicely in the middle of SF Art Week, so people who are interested can come. And then she is willing to be sort of in residence during the week to welcome guests and give tours. And of course, her exhibit will be up from January to February, or through, excuse me, through January and February.
Right.
So I think the primary. Objective of this discussion item was just to give you all the awareness of what's going on and then, you know, if there's any questions or anything you want to flesh out.
Do you know if Krista mentioned anything to you about? Any kind of, you know, communication with the businesses or the Chamber of Commerce or anything like that?
I think she was going to reach out to Mel. I gave her Melanie's information and also Stephanie's from Destination Tiburon.
Awesome.
So I can work with her to encourage those introductions and. I know Melanie's busy trying to get the Holiday Festival together, so I would imagine maybe after the holidays we can get some. And I'm happy to reach out to some of the local businesses and see if there's any fun drink specials or, you know, any other activations they would, they would like to do, so.
Great. Okay, well, I might reach out to her also and see if she's, maybe we can design a little something to leave at businesses or, you know.
Yeah, definitely.
She has a lot of things to do. And I have promised I will give her a hand in all of them. She's very much interested in the water saving.
Yes, the shoreline and the water.
Shorelines and so on. It's really wonderful. Maybe in this project might be good for the young people. To participate. That might be a very good. Getting together with the young people. I think they would love to do that.
I mean, I don't, do you think there's enough time for them to get involved? I mean, they can certainly, I think they should know to come and we can certainly tell.
Also say that it's a holiday weekend.
Yeah.
So there's like, there won't be a lot of families.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, I know some marine biologists that would like, students that would love to get artists.
I mean, nonetheless, we can put it out to the schools and let them know that if there are people here, I'll be here.
It was very impressive at the ICB, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Nogez.
In terms of the events.
Can you put your microphone?
Oh, it's on, sorry. Specifically, January 18th, it says Marin Art Day and it's 3 to 5. Is that supposed to be here or where exactly?
It'll be here, but I believe from what I understand, and I'm not entirely sure about this, but there are a few galleries in Marin and I, maybe they're all sort of aligning on. You know, this is when you go and check. It's when the city people might come over and go to our gallery and then go to some other galleries in Marin.
Okay, so, but my question is in terms of, you know, this is great. I think it's wonderful and I think the opportunity to, you know, connect with the San Francisco Art Week is phenomenal. But my question is, who is taking charge of making sure that all the connections are made so that everybody is on the same page? And who's, you know, responsible for making it happen?
I believe Krista has been insignificant. I mean, she's the one liaising with, liaising with SF Art Week. But I, I think she might need some empowerment by the commissioners to let her go and make it happen and maybe give you guys some direction or requests for volunteer help. I think she's, she's excited to get started, but might need some encouragement and empowerment, you know?
I mean, I can, I can reach out to Krista and ask her.
What she needs.
What she needs from us and how we can become more involved and participate in the events. Yeah.
Exactly. Thank you.
I think she's plenty to do that, actually.
She's still getting her feet under her.
She wants our help.
Is there, is it time for, are there any more questions from the commissioners or is it time for public comment? Seeing none. Okay, moving on. Action item number one, gallery management process for upper and lower gallery exhibitions. This was put on the agenda at the request of the vice chair and the chair. Consider establishing a protocol stating that the commissioner assigned to each artist will be responsible for promoting the show and reception, coordinating directly with the artist. And managing all event logistics, including staffing setup and cleanup for the reception.
And the banner.
And the banner. And maybe even picking up the banner.
Sure. I mean, the banner's not far. It's, it's in San Rafael. It's not that far.
And dropping it off.
Yeah.
I've done both.
Yes. And your husband has participated in the second video as well.
Amazing.
Um, so I see, I think that we had something in writing, but just putting something in a process, almost like an event checklist. That we can also share with the artist just to keep us all accountable in terms of a timeline. Did we have something drafted like that, but having it be very detailed so that whoever is assigned is responsible and needs to own all of those tasks? The artist knows what to own in terms of those tasks, because right now the process is unclear and varies reception to reception, so.
We had a, we had a kind of a working document, but I like your idea of a checklist. And one where, I mean, I know that we have hang date, remove date, reception date, hang banner here. But clearly there are other milestones that you have to do, like you have to get the artwork for the banner and you have to design the banner, you know, all this stuff. I think a checklist that's a version of the working document that we have is a great idea and. I'm happy to share that with you and we can kind of, maybe you and I can work on that and just.
Do that.
Get it, get it.
I thought we did have a checklist because I, I know I worked out something that six weeks before for Diane Smith and, you know, blah, blah.
We did. I mean, I, I call it a working document. There was nothing to kind of like, you know, I mean.
Yeah, maybe sort of like a timeline for what we have to do.
Yeah, like a chart with a timeline and then like a couple of rows for dates and, you know, that kind of thing.
That'd be great. Appreciate your work.
The problem is the banner. The banner needs a specific. Photos of the person who wants to show and the DPIs and sizes and all that. That is the only one. Otherwise, we have always asked. The artist, the food and is your thing to do? But we are only offering drinks. Wine, water. So they, this is so, it has always been very clear.
Regarding, excuse, regarding the banner, I was just thinking. Who designs the banner? I think in the past, the artist submits the design, but now it's done by us, other than the image?
No, I don't think so. It has always.
By the artist?
No.
No, by.
By us.
By.
So the artist has a.
I have been designing them this year.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Artist sent appropriate.
And I wonder if we could, I, I love creativity. This is about art, but I wonder if we could have a signature design so every time it comes up. Everybody knows that's heritage and arts reception.
Well, I mean, we, we have the logo that we always include, but I mean, I understand your, your point there. I mean, I think that depending on the artwork, sometimes it's hard to kind of create a one-size-fits-all thing and sometimes like Susan Katz wanted three images in one.
Right. One. No, no, I was just thinking, if you're going to do the logo, maybe it's always at the lower, right, than people identify.
Sure.
That's all.
Well, I'll leave that to Marissa to kind of.
But for example, with a checklist, Marissa would need a deadline, would need a lead time to get that creative from the artist. So the person who's responsible could easily have that checklist to know four weeks in advance or six weeks in advance, I would get those items to you. So that you would have time and there wouldn't be rapid turnaround.
Yeah, each of us who's responsible for a specific artist should know and talk with the artist and clear it all out.
In my contact this year with several exhibitions, I follow the rule of six weeks before for. And immediately have the artist, when we engage at the beginning, I sort of give them an idea of what's.
Do we have that documented anywhere?
Documented. No, no, we have, we have, we have a working draft sheet that has all the things. They just need to be.
I think.
User-friendly, you know, in a kind of a user-friendly format where somebody can just look at it and say, I mean, they, they should be done in order of, you know.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a format where we could send it to the artist and all.
And, and let's not forget that the other, the other responsibility for the artist, of course, and the commissioner who's working with the artist. Is, and this is another document that, you know, a one pager we can create is to help them with marketing or, I mean, some, some artists are clearly very, very good and accomplished at their own marketing, but others are not. And, but they need to know that we're, we're really not, you know, in a position to do as much as, you know, we'd like. I mean, there are certain things that we can do and we do do, but clearly, you know, we want a good. A broad outreach so that our receptions and the shows are well attended.
The ARC writes about them.
Yes.
About their work. That's the best thing they could have.
But they need to, you know, they need to, if they have a newsletter or an email list, they need to, you know, kind of contact people and say, come, come over, come to this thing.
Yeah.
I think Nora would like.
That's why when you look at this action item and it says, consider establishing a protocol stating that the commissioner assigned to each artist will be responsible. For promoting the show and reception. We've never done that. We have put the onus on the artist themselves.
I think, yeah, I think you're, you're right, and, and maybe it's a little too literal here. I think the intention was that the commissioner has to basically do a little more handholding with the artist and, and, and make sure that the artist understands.
Exactly.
What they need to be doing and that, you know, but, but the commissioner also has to contact the ARC, has to, you know, sometimes they have to, like I've, in the past, we've all done this, I'm sure. You have to go in, go between the ARC and the, you know, introduce the artist to whoever's at the ARC who's going to do the show, the, the piece. You know, try to get them together and that's, there's a whole scheduling thing there as.
Oh, yeah, that, that sounds the issue, but the issue is that from the get-go, and I think the idea of having, you know, this sheet that has checklist essentially. By this date, you have to do this, 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 and that, the other. It should be made very clear to the artist from the get-go that they need to put together a mailing list. Of who they want to invite, who their friends are, their universe of potential attendees, because I don't think.
And they can use the, they can also use whatever image or information, you know, that is in the banner.
Exactly.
They can use that.
To create the invitation.
Yeah, to create the invitation or to, to, to push out on Instagram or their social media channels or LinkedIn or whatever they're using.
Right.
The beginning of the year, I'm sorry, we did create that.
Yes, we have that document. We'll have to.
We have the document that it says exactly, if I am in charge of this person's art, I know exactly what I have to do.
Yeah, I mean.
We already have. You just want to refine it.
We want to refine it, but we also want to.
I see.
Bring it back. We want to resurrect that idea, which seems, seems to slightly, you know, submerged a little bit.
Okay. Oops.
Oh, here, now it's working. I think what you're doing is just right, is getting it, you know, refine it and getting all the checklist. I know with my initial email in confirming a show, I spell all of that, what they're responsible for, including marketing and all that. Of course, at the end, you, you say, if you need my help, you know, and be nice about it. And I think once this is refined, the artists know pretty much that they are in charge of their own publicity and less burden on us.
It's also in the contract that they sign.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It is clear, whether they read it or not, it's clearly written in there.
Right, and that, the contract also is another piece of that.
Yeah, in the contract, it does mention that.
Okay.
I don't know if you need to take action. I, I don't know what you want to do.
I don't think there's any, I mean, I don't think there's any real action item. I mean, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, share the, share the document with Liz because I think we did it before you, you arrived here.
Seeing a version. I, I don't.
It was, you were very.
In my files, though.
But I'll send it to you and then we can kind of, you know, doctor it up as more of a chart type thing with checklist. You know, more, more kind of proactive.
Like how many weeks before?
Yeah.
Okay. And we can maybe review that at the January meeting.
Let's do it.
Okay.
And how to lower the top rack for the wine glasses and the dishwasher.
That is an excellent item.
Using AI. Have a video.
Tutorial for that. Yeah, YouTube tutorials.
Teaching session.
Yeah.
All right, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Moving on. Action item number two and the final action item of the evening. Art exhibition schedule. So Liz and Arjun got together. And put together this chart. A couple of the artists that are noted by asterisks need commissioner approval to reach out to them and schedule them. We do have November and December is still available. And Azita reminded me that an artist reached out to me and I can reach back out to her and we can confirm that next month if we think she's good. So there's not much to this staff report is just. If you go to the third page, the, there are five artists and organizations for you to review and approve. You've looked at some of their work. And then I've also listed. Potential reception dates. That's the pattern of the Tuesday after the hanging of the exhibition. And then. Setting a budget for food and beverages, but maybe you guys want to do that in January when you discuss the overall budget.
I think that's a good idea. I, I will also say that, you know, and you go back to page one and two for the upper gallery. You know, yes, the asterisk ones need approval. And I don't know if all of the artists have already confirmed their, I mean, there's really the first, we're, we're talking about the first six months here. really the first, uh, we're, we're talking about the first six months here. Uh, Brian Higgins, I was in communication with Brian Higgins and he is thrilled to be a part of.
And Suzanne too.
And Suzanne too. Okay, great. So then Brian and Suzanne are, you know, they're, they're confirmed for March, April and May and June. Um, I mean, I have yet to I sit down and have a conversation with Brian and I, I plan on doing that in the next couple of weeks. But, um, so we're, you know, we're good to go, uh, for the next three artists. And who, who did we say was doing, who's doing Susan Siminger?
Um, I, I reached out to her and confirmed, yeah. And then I said I would, I can, yeah.
Yeah. And I can be, I can help. I mean, who, who, who brought Brian to our attention? I think it was Azita, correct?
Oh, well, he was in the ARC. I think Liz and I both read his article and we were like, ooh.
Oh, okay, okay.
Francisco, maybe he.
Honorary commissioner.
Overture.
Getting not.
Um, I guess, uh, we, you know, we, we can, we can, we can talk about who does what, but let's, let's talk about quickly while we still have time. I mean, this could be the shortest H and A special meeting ever. Um, we have Tyler Willis, uh, Robert Hightower. Well, for the upper gallery, we have Tyler Willis.
And the rest we approved in the last.
And the rest were approved, yes. And then for the lower gallery, we have, um, some ideas here. Uh, as you can see, so, so Tyler Willis to, to, you, you wanna talk a little bit about Tyler? He's somebody that you know and he's local.
Yeah, I enclosed his bio in here. Um, we took a look at his website the last time. Um, he was born and raised in Marin, lives in San Francisco now, but teaches at Marin, teaches art at Marin Catholic High School. Um, and does a lot of portraiture, a lot of different colors and, um, his portfolio is in there. I don't know if we can pull it up again.
Uh, yeah.
Or if you wanna just pull it up on your tablet.
Yeah, you can.
Um, and then I had reached out to him just about interest and timing and he is available and interested if, if we wanna move forward.
Great.
Wasn't there one concern that his artwork was similar to Robert Hightower's?
So, so Liz and I had this conversation. We discussed this at our, when we met. And while we feel that there are some commonalities, we feel that they are distinct enough and certainly stylistically, uh, distinct that, uh, I don't see a problem, um, with having both Robert Hightower and Tyler Willis showing one at the, one in the upper gallery and one in the lower gallery. Isn't that?
At two different times of the year.
Two different.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to know that, that was discussed, but I think it'd be great.
We, we definitely, we definitely talked about that when we met. Yeah.
I, I wanted to first thank everyone for, I guess you two for organizing this. This is really pretty good. But I, I did have a suggestion that I thought, if you haven't talked with Brian Higgins, I was wondering if the ICB could take both upper and lower for that February and March because they are par ready and they have a lot of showing. And then move, um, Hightower as an individual artist up to the upper gallery. Because usually upper gallery, we save it for individual artists.
And you're saying it's, uh, so right now Higgins is set for March, April. So you think.
Oh, he's set.
No, no, I mean, I, I haven't, like I said, that's the date that I proposed to him.
I, I was just thinking, um, I know ICB has a lot of artists and I was wondering, maybe that's a good time for us to view all the artists and for the public to see it. And if they are ready to go, they could certainly do it in February and March. But.
So, so remember, the.
I'm just thinking of that. Upper and lower.
Yeah, the only thing is, the only difficulty with that is that the upper schedule is March, April. And the lower schedule is February, March. Right?
Yes, because landmarks is in.
Landmarks is in, in lower, in lower and through January.
Well, I guess I was just wondering if they could be flexible. I mean, ICB par has a lot of artists and they're willing to maybe the person at ICB could curate and figure that out. Uh, that would give Hightower an individual upstairs versus the group things down here. Maybe it's not worth all.
I mean, I mean, I mean, I, I, I see, I understand what you're saying and I'm, I'm, I'm not in any kind of disagreement with that idea. I just feel like logistically, I don't know how you can split a group show, you know what I mean, and say, okay, well, some people can show downstairs or upstairs, uh, February. Yeah, yeah, you know.
Well, I was gonna just leave it up to ICB, you know, they have so many different artists and, but that's okay.
I mean, I feel like ICB is one of those things also that maybe early this year, next year's could be challenging for them since there are, it is a group show and um, it might be hard to kind of, you know, wrangle everybody in short time after the.
It's, it's, it's fine. It was just a suggestion. I was just thinking it might be really impressive to have ICB upper and lower, you know, multiple artists. Um, the other thing is just, uh, I love the, uh, group shows, uh, to correspond with the heritage month. Um, except the, um, reception time, I think the April ninth for the Asian women um, is during Easter weekend. Easter week and.
Oh.
I don't know about, I'm just bringing, maybe just changing the date of the reception or whatever. Um, but that's just something to look at. I love the idea of reunion schools for beginning of the school year and, um, really appreciate all the work that has gone into, you know, finagle the schedule.
Well, and one thing that we, we also discuss that we can discuss later in the spring and the summer is um, coordinating with DITF. So if there are any events happening, um, in conjunction with API, we can align the artist event with that as well.
Uh, I, I have the suggestion. There is, it's November, December upstairs, we don't have an artist. And there, there is a girl that has been calling. She's, uh, she had a solo exhibition in Rhode Island. She's a graduate of Brown and she's very talented and she, she's very, has been asking and calling and uh, calling, asking me and there, you can look at her, her website. She's called Kylie Hubercorn.
So can you send the link?
Kylie Hubercorn.
Yes, I will. Um, she did call me. I haven't yet called her back, but I will send a link. I'll look up, find her website and I'll look it up and I'll also call her and.
Because that we could put for November.
I mean, we can, we can certainly take a look at her work again together as a commission in Jan, in the January meeting because the.
That would be.
The show wouldn't be until November, December anyways.
Can I just give an insight, shall we say? Um, Diane Green, who's in charge of the library, she came here and she absolutely loved my work. She just couldn't believe some of them, how she thought it was just extraordinary. And then she was the one who said that I'm so sorry, I cannot give you a show in the library. Since the library has been remodeled, it is strictly for group shows. So Town Hall is the only gallery that we have, we can show individual artists. And we have been doing so beautifully in the past year. We really have to make sure that we really choose good artists because now it is us only in Belida Tiburon that can have.
That's a, that's a great factoid for the ARC.
Yes.
As well.
So, uh, I just wanted to mention that because in ICB building, there are a lot of artists who would love to do, um, individual.
Well, I think, I think, uh, you know, the group show to start with will give us an opportunity also and will.
It is nice.
Get, get us, uh, uh, better acquainted with everyone. I mean, I've been going to the, you know, to the open studios there.
You know, they have, some of them have showed here, you know, solo show.
They have, yeah.
They have, yes.
Oh. Um, so what I wanted to say is I appreciate all of the work that went into this. I think it looks fabulous and I would like to just vote on it and accept it.
Well.
But, um, you might, one of, there's three different options. Um, you might skip the reception date option for now and we can discuss that in January when we have better calendars and a little more time. Cause we have January and February set.
If we look at the recommendations, I, I agree with Nora. I mean, if everybody's happy with the, um, you know, the proposed artists and the outreach that we have, because we have not confirmed the Asian Women's Artist Association yet, or the Marin Latinx or the, um.
Reed Schools.
Reed Schools yet, but, uh, um, you know, recommendation one and recommendation, uh, I think that's really the, the action item there, right? Because three staff recommends that a budget be set for food. We can talk about that too right now, if you like. The, the, the budget for food and, uh, beverages for receptions in the lower gallery. Yes. What was it that we had?
Um, it looks like you approved $300 per event, uh, for underrepresented emerging artists in the lower gallery. Um, to, to provide food. You guys did the nugget platters and whatnot, in addition to the usual wine and Pellegrino.
So that would be for the number of shows then would be, uh, let's see.
Uh, five.
Five.
Five, so $1,500.
That's including landmarks?
No, I think landmark does their own.
Four.
Four.
Oh, four, yeah. Uh, one, two, three, four. And clearly Reed Union Schools, I don't know if we're gonna have wine at the Reed Union Schools.
Parents or.
Maybe, yeah. Get the parents out, sure.
And, but you could use a little bit of that budget to buy, you know, juices or root beers, whatever kids drink.
Yeah, 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 that's true. Right, right. Uh, I mean, I, I, I think that's, that's reasonable. That's, you know, not too, too much in that. So the total would be $1,200 for the year coming out of our.
I think 300 is a reasonable amount. I think it's probably about 200 to 250 at Nugget.
I think it was, yeah, 225 was the last check I reviewed.
We're good, good guess. So 75 would probably cover the, um.
So question.
How much did we use when we, you had the Native American show? It's over $4,000.
That was the event.
Outside.
Entertainment.
They pay for the, um, special performances.
Performances.
But for the reception, it was.
Then I couldn't understand.
They offer free food.
Performing arts, so. So if they're in the lower room, we subsidize the food, but if they're in the upper room, the artist has to do it.
Correct.
And do we anticipate that that's equitable from the artist's point of view and the community, et cetera?
Well, I think that reason.
I thought that.
I, I think it's because we're talking about underrepresented groups.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to bring, you know, we're, we're trying to promote participation and exposure and diversity here at the, at the gallery.
So if the, if they're upstairs, they're, they're not overrepresented, but they're well known and they can afford their own party.
And this is a policy of.
Yeah.
Yeah, individual artists usually, that's.
These are also group show, most of the shows downstairs are group shows as well. And they're not promoting their work.
Individual work.
Individual artist.
I just think we should have a sort of criteria that, you know, said like, you know, like, um, if it's an organization like The Home, you know, they're coming and they're, they don't have a budget. It's not individuals. That, that makes sense that we would.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the groups that we worked with in the last year, if you recall, were also nonprofit organizations.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, nonprofit.
Yes.
So with a nonprofit.
Most of these, and most of these are, I mean, uh, except for the ones that we cobble together. Uh, most, most have, I mean, well, actually they all have been. I think, uh, Marin, uh, Art Center also is, was a non-pro, is a.
Yeah, Marin City, so.
That could be the criteria for nonprofits. We're voting on this to support their.
So actually for next year, only, only the Asian and the Marin Latinx. Um, do we want Reed School to do their own or are we gonna have enough for?
No, I, I think it's.
225 for Nugget is gonna cover.
I think it's okay.
Okay.
I think it's okay. And I think also with Robert Hightower as well, you know, as somebody who is trying to get his work out there and, you know, he's, he's out there in Mill Valley downtown at the depot, you know, and elsewhere selling his, trying to, trying to, trying to get some exposure and stuff, you know, in his case, he doesn't, you know, he's not at the ICB. He doesn't have a network like that.
But that might kinda.
Yeah.
Differentiate from what Trish was saying. If they are solo artists, they are responsible for their, regardless of the placement, I guess. That's why I was trying to move Hightower there.
So in Hightower's case, he would, he would go with the food and we would supply the wine.
Wine for individual artists.
Yeah, I mean, if that's.
It's not a big deal, but I think it's important to, um.
Have a consistent.
Yeah, for what Trish was saying.
Okay.
For the community.
I take issue, I disagree because I think that again, what we're trying to do in the lower gallery is to really feature underrepresented, you know, whether they be individual or groups, which tend to also coincide with the fact that they don't have access to, you know.
Resources and, 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 and network and money, yeah.
Yeah. And so this is, this is an opportunity for them to get a level playing field where they otherwise wouldn't and get exposure to this community. And so people take notice of them.
I understand that, but I, I feel that he's coming back. We did feature him as one of the artists, but he's coming back as an individual. And this for the lower part was just because of scheduling versus, I just, I, I disagree with Trish that I think some consistency. I understand we should be as helpful as we can, but I, I look at him as a, as equal to any other artist coming.
Are they able to sell also?
Yes, they are. And in this case, you're right, he is a returning artist. Um, yeah.
Well, but I, I just think it's important that we have some consistency and so that we could tell the public what, why we're spending public money on certain people and certain groups.
Sure.
Versus something else. Just a thought, we could figure out.
Any, anybody else wanna add?
Sure. You mean that we shouldn't have the same artist again? Is that what you're saying?
No, he. What I'm saying, we were talking about subsidizing the refreshments for the reception. And what I'm saying is that because Hightower is an individual artist, this to follow up on what Trish was suggesting, some consistency in what we subsidize and what we expect of individual artists.
Whereas in the lower gallery, in the past, last year, they were all nonprofit organizations or they were curated by nonprofit organizations. And they were mostly group shows. In this case, Robert Hightower is an individual artist and so therefore should be treated as the individual artist upstairs. However, he's not upstairs. He's downstairs.
Yeah.
That was why I was trying to move him upstairs in November, but that's okay.
I'll also point out that two of the shows occur in this fiscal year and two of the shows occur in the next fiscal year. So really the budget is gonna be split between years. So I don't know if that helps. I was just gonna propose, we could, what, would there be an issue with us covering food costs for every show to mitigate this or is, I mean, isn't our budget doubling next year?
Yeah, but I think the doubling, we had intention of having some new programs, not just upping supplies.
Okay. I mean, just doing some.
We're gonna have Dom Perignon send a couple.
We went from, if we did the, I think there's, um.
But is, I have a question. May I ask something? It's, uh, I, I thought that we had, our budget was 10,000 before.
Your budget was 7,000, I believe, two years ago. And then, um, when the fiscal year changed over this past June, July 1st, it doubled to 15,000. June, July 1st, it doubled to 15,000.
Oh, that's not bad, okay. I remember when we had.
Thanks to Victoria.
But I, I guess for me it begs the question, is the intent of the use of the lower gallery to highlight, feature underrepresented communities, whether they be group or individual, whereas upstairs, we don't do that. That's just a regular gallery with the, you know, tried and true format, which is individual shows upstairs, the artists always provide their own food and we provide the drinks and that's it.
I mean, I, I make that distinction and that's how I see it, so I'm in agreement with you. I mean, but I understand also Trish's point about use of public funds and, and, and a policy. I mean, you know, I guess the, 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 the response would be, why would an individual artist in the lower gallery be given uh, a, a budget for their reception for food? And I would answer, because the lower gallery is reserved for artists who are from underrepresented and underserved communities.
Exactly.
And therefore, in an effort to, you know, promote and, and, and support these artists and these communities, we are giving $275 towards their food.
Exactly.
That's fine. And then I think we need to take a look at how do you determine who the individual artist is from underrepresented groups? You know, I, I just think um Trish made a good point at that time.
Income qualifying.
Yeah. And we're gonna go into our, show your financial.
A nonprofit is easy to determine, you're not making a profit.
We have been trying to focus on groups to kind of showcase the underrepresented groups through a nonprofit and then we support that and hopefully we get more exposure individually. But anyway, I'm, I'm just in support of some consistency and for our um public.
Well, you know, the consistency is this, that in the lower gallery, in the lower gallery, we provide the food and in the upper gallery, the artist provides.
If needed.
That's the consistency. That's what the policy was all of last year and that's what the policy could be going forward next year. That's the consistency right there. I mean, and there was no, there was no changes in, 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 in funding, in funding artists or groups downstairs last year.
So are we gonna be starting to look at the lower for individual artists going?
I think, I think 2026, we decided to continue this, this, maybe in 2027, the lower gallery will be for a different purpose altogether. You know?
I mean, I thought we did agree on that. It should be in the record that that's what we agreed was.
We agree.
Yeah.
And that's what the.
I believe language was emerging artists and underrepresented.
Yeah.
Communities, but there wasn't a definition of nonprofit versus not. It just happened to be group shows was what.
And it was entirely consistent throughout last year. And so, you know, if anything, it would be inconsistent, it would be.
To vote on how much we want to spend.
Yes.
So if you set it up, certain amount may not work out. But in the past, in the last year, we have been voted how much we can.
I mean, we can just, just say not to exceed, not to exceed $300.
I think, yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I think this is fine with me. I mean, we're talking about $275 or 300. Um, but it's something to think about. I just wanted to say.
My point of clarification was we just said emerging artists. So I could rationalize like, okay, for downstairs is emerging and underrepresented artists with the rationale being they're not gonna be selling a lot because they're established artists that are selling upstairs. So they pay for their own reception, whereas the emerging artists, the nonprofits, the underrepresented, they, we would expect they're not selling as much by definition. So we're helping them out with the, with the public funds.
So in the past, in the past with the downstairs, any of those uh sales, we just let the nonprofit keep total without that 30% or 25%. Um, so with, with this individual artist, we're gonna keep the same. He's gonna keep 100%.
He's an emerging artist. And I think to add to your definition, I would add that younger artists also who, who are emerging, you know, who don't have the track record that some of these folks we've had showing.
Not as they're showing.
Been around for 40, 50, sometimes 60 years. Uh, you know, they have vast networks. You know, they have, they already have audiences that support them and buyers who support them as well.
Then we're consistent, upper and lower. Who pays?
And underrepresented. Yeah.
All right, is there?
Thanks for the clarification. That's good.
Um, well, should we move on the, on the, on, on the recommendation number one, which is the proposed um lineup for upper and lower galleries?
I move to accept the proposed schedule of the gallery um artists and shows.
Second.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Azita?
Yes.
Are you in favor of this motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I should have taken public comment uh prior to the vote. But I am seeing none, so I think we're safe. Thank you.
Okay, uh, before we end, I, I just wanna ask one question. Um, I'm happy to, you know, talk to Brian Higgins, but is there anybody here who would want to take that on as, as an artist? Uh, that they want to work with in particular? He's the gentleman from.
Work with Krista.
You're gonna work with Krista?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's great because you're a former artist lawyer yourself. That's wonderful. Um, I'm happy to work with Brian also, but uh, I'm just putting it out there. I don't wanna swoop in. If anybody is interested in Brian Higgins for March, April, let me know. We have time, we have time. Okay.
Um, I'll quickly slip gloss through the calendar. Um, as you see, the Landmark Society have started installing their maps exhibition that runs through January 28th. Um, their reception is on January 22nd. Uh, this Saturday from 2 to 5 is the Tiburon Holiday Festival downtown. Lower Main Street is gonna be closed. Uh, also on Saturday from 10 to 4 is the Landmarks Holiday Arts and Crafts Sale at the Art and Garden Center. Sunday, December 7th at 1 o'clock and 4 o'clock, MUSEA is performing at Old St. Hillary's Landmark. Um, I'm sure Dave would love volunteer drivers. Um, the, the post-meeting for December 8th um may get canceled. Arjun and Liz, I'll, I'll give you guys an update tomorrow when I hear.
Okay.
Um, and then December 14th is the Hubbott of Tiburon Hanukkah Festival and menorah lighting at Fountain Plaza. And then Town Hall is closed December 24th to January 5th. Um, and then the Landmark Society Art Exhibition is January 22nd. Or opening reception.
Do we want to add the January 18th for the San Francisco Art Week?
Yes, January 18th is the Marin Art Day here at Town Hall. And then uh, January 20th is Krista's opening kickoff reception. And I'll be in touch with you guys about really how to splash that out.
And, and the San Francisco Week.
Is January 17th to the 25th. It's in your, um, it's.
But, 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 what is going to happen or what, how are we involved with?
Um, it's on the staff report. We, it was discussion item number two.
What, what is the uh Landmarks uh reception date?
January 22nd from 6 to 8 p.m.
Land, this, this show?
The map exhibit, yeah.
In the calendar.
Oh, okay, there it is.
Are you looking for volunteers to be there?
Volunteer, yeah.
I think that's all landmark, landmark.
Yeah, Landmarks handles it. Just show up and have a glass of wine. Commissioner Nogez.
Yes, um, as a point of order, given that this is our last meeting of 2025, I would like to thank. I would like to thank Marissa for all of the tremendous work that she has given us throughout this year because without her pushing us along, we would not accomplish everything we've accomplished, so.
Absolutely.
Bravo, bravo, thank you.
Well, thank you. I gladly accept your um kudos as a point of order. It is on the record. Thank you.
Special recognition of them without you.
You guys do just, you do, guys do a lot on your own and I've had a lot of fun this year.
And Francisco.
And Francisco.
Thank you.
CMC, I'm back, thank you.
Yes.
See you all at the holiday party next week at the Corinthian Yacht Club.
Yes.
We're looking forward to it.
The meeting is adjourned.
Bravo.
Under an hour.